All the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Shaldes.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Butterfield. Osmus.
Here.
Vagerly.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. And I do it not electronically. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Regular business, the continuation of our 2024 improvement hearing. Jared.
Evening, Mayor and Council. At our last meeting, Council reviewed the projects that were identified for the 2024 improvements. We didn't get into a lot of discussion related to the memo that was enclosed in your packet, which provides a recommendation from staff based on the $12 million figure in capital improvement plan. But that memo is again in your packets this evening. And the projects that are being recommended for the 2024 improvements include 13th Grayson Rice Improvement Project, that's a project that was identified for construction in 2023, but was subsequently moved to a future year, and that's being recommended for 2024. The 10th Street Improvement Project. In addition to that, the seal code improvements to preserve the streets that have been recently upgraded and extend their life. The 19th Avenue Path Improvement Project, which is a project that the city did receive active transportation funds for, for the construction of that path along 19th Avenue. And then finally, the Thompson Park Parking Lot and Ella Avenue Path Improvement Project, parking lot reconstruction and the rehabilitation of a section of that trail that's in disrepair. Those projects total $11,752,800. And I would be happy to answer any questions that Council might have regarding those projects or projects that were discussed at the previous meeting.
Yes. By any chance, on Grace Avenue, are you doing that in two sections or is that all being done in one? And then 13th Street would be done? I'm thinking of the people, specifically probably Saunders, who lives at 13th and Grace. And where are they going to park and come in from?
Yeah, so that project will definitely be phased, similar to if, I'm not sure how well our council is, but we phased like the Gorton Avenue improvements, so that access could still be provided in 2023. But yes, that project will be phased. We don't want to rip that whole thing up at one time.
Okay.
That would be not good.
Yeah, okay. They just don't have, you know, that particular area town doesn't have cross streets to allow them to just be, you know, behind or whatever. They're odd streets. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Audrey.
In that same area there, on Grace, there are some people who don't have backyards that even access a street or can get across. They're really landlocked.
Okay.
And would be on the south side between 13th and there too. So I hope that we're making some special recognition or understanding of how people are going to get in and out of there.
Yeah, before the, before we bring the plans back to Council for approval and approval of advertisement, should the project move forward this evening, we'll have additional details about what we've incorporated into the contract to make sure that they have, won't be ideal access, but access nonetheless. Yep.
Thank you.
Carl.
Just a question on the Ella Avenue, the path improvement. Is that the section just in Thompson Park? Or would include the, just catch along the, between the lakes or between the pond?
Just moving from the parking lot east, I am trying to find that footage here. Not very, it's not real long.
No, no, but it's in, yeah, it's in bad shape.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Does that, I don't recall, does that stop at Thompson, the path? No, I know the path goes on, but the, the construction?
Would stop at the parking lot.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Anything else? So what do we do?
There is a resolution in your packets this evening. If Council's in agreement with the projects recommended by, by city staff, it would be adopting that resolution.
One more question. I'm trying to think of his name, the gentleman that was here. I wrote it on another piece of paper, that was concerned about the trees.
Josh.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah. Have you determined if those trees go or not?
There are a number of trees that'll be removed as part of the project. A lot of them are the, primarily for the utility installation, a lot of the trees also are impacting the curb. And as he indicated, not all of the services are, the locations of the services aren't exactly known, but if there is a tree right next to a service, it can't remain in place when there's a excavation next to it for safety purposes. So obviously, we're looking at those trees. We know they're a resource, although the Emerald Dashboard and everything is in the area. Definitely, as part of all the projects, we'll preserve as many as we can, for sure.
Well, it's so beautiful. It's just a shame. I have to agree that Augusta, or is it, which one was it that all the trees went? That was, wasn't Augusta? Irene, it was Irene that all the trees went. I gotta agree, it looked like a tornado came through there. It's, it's hard. I like trees. But I understand tree roots getting underneath curb and gutter and into sewer lines.
Definitely, definitely an asset, but also can create problems for infrastructure.
All right, Council? I gotta close the hearing, don't I, before that?
The hearing was closed last.
Pardon me?
The hearing was closed.
Oh, it was?
This is now Council discussion.
It's step to the Council, okay.
This is all the Council discussion.
All right, Council, what do you want to do with this?
And also, Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention, remind the Council that this does require seven affirmative votes. And we have seven members here, so.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that we adopt the resolution ordering the 224th Street and other improvements and direct staff to prepare final plans and specifications?
Based on the memo? Projects based on the memo?
Yes.
Not on that.
All right. Do we get a second?
Second.
Here we go, a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Audrey.
Just, just one question with the pushback that we did this year and the ones that we're pushing back next year. Is our 10-year plan closer to a 15-year plan?
Definitely closer to 15 than 10, yes. I, I don't know if it's 17 or 15 or 14, but it's more projects than a 10-year at this point.
This year, probably 15, maybe next year.
Well, hopefully we get good prices and inflation isn't what it's been the last couple of years.
Councilmember Butterfield, you know where we are? We're on the, okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
This is a roll call.
Huh? Roll call, yes, it's a resolution, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shaldes.
Aye.
O'Brien. Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Vagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you. All right. Budget review. Butch? You have to get up to the microphone, Butch. Give us your address and your name.
My name is Donald Haug. A lot of you may know me as Butch. I reside at 2670 Fairway Drive Northeast. And maybe I'm at the wrong time here, but did notice in the paper that the street in which we live has been deleted from being on the agenda to be repaired. Fairway Drive Northeast. I'm a writer, I'm a, I think we're right, according to the newspaper. The reason, the reason why, and I don't know if this is the right time, but we just, we, as a street, passed a petition back about almost a year ago to have the street repaired. And we see now that it is being taken off of the list to be repaired. Now, I live at 2670 Fairway Drive. My son lives at 2733, and my daughter lives at 2608. So we have three properties, residences on the street. The petition was drafted by my neighbor, Dave George, and we circulated the petition to all of the people on the street. And the petition was signed by all of the people on the street to repair the street or do what is necessary to repair that, that street or fix it. Our concern is, is that right now it's okay, but it needs to be attended to. We're, we're concerned that if it isn't attended to and it isn't repaired, it's going to cost us more in the future. And that's the reason why we circulated the petition. And that was our argument with, or our position with the other people that were on the street, that we felt that if we waited longer, it would cost us more. Now.
Let me call on Jared. Isn't that on the overlay?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. No problem. That's correct, Mayor. The mill and overlay piece of the projects that were identified in the report, based on the last action by Council this evening, those are being delayed until a future date. They've been removed from the 2024 improvements.
This has been removed?
Correct, the mill and overlay component has been.
Okay.
Yep. So that'll be a future year. Certainly, the projects that are moved from the 2024 will be the first candidates that come back to Council for future years' consideration.
Got that, Butch?
I hear it, but I don't like it. Like I say, we, I've lived on that street since 1975, when it was nothing more than just some gravel. And when we were next to the city, it was improved and has been nothing done with it since that time, except for some patches here and there. So, and it wasn't, it wasn't done in 1975. It was done after that, where we did actually put the street in. So my concern is, I don't want to pay more later. That's my concern. And if we don't improve the street when it's to be approved, it will cost us later and it'll cost us more money. Now, that's as homeowners, not necessarily just the city, but it would cost the city more also. And that's where we were, we're coming from.
Well, hopefully it stays to the point that it can be overlayed for you, Butch.
Well, we hope so.
Yeah.
But it's close.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
I did get the information that you sent, and I was kind of surprised that it was removed. So I am kind of interested to know, why was that chosen to be removed?
The petition?
No, the overlay.
Oh.
Why was that Fairway Drive, why was that removed?
Sure. As part of the, the plan that was adopted, the targeted dollar value of improvements on an annual basis was $12 million. And those projects, the mill and overlay projects, would have put the overall project cost significantly over that. So some projects had to be deleted in order to meet the $12 million cap. And those were the projects that were, were identified that could make it another year without doing the improvement in 2024.
So your observation was that it could, it could go another year then?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right.
Question?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, the petition, did that only go to Ward 1 Councilmembers? I don't believe I ever saw a petition.
We, we turned it in at the, at the city office, right, Dave?
Mayor.
Give us your name.
David George, I live in Fairway Drive, 2776 Fairway Drive. Petition was given to Ward 1 Councilmembers. And then I also brought a petition to the, I can't remember the gentleman's name here that was in charge of the projects. Who has since, is left. I got no member's name. Anyway, so I had petition to the Council, Ward 1 Councilmembers, and a petition brought into the city office also.
Okay.
And if I may elaborate a little bit, it may be able to go another year in order to, for overlay and the repair and the maintenance, but there's kids out there on that, on Fairway Drive, and rollerblading, riding bikes, and it's, it's not the safest for them to be doing that at this point in time. Again, thus, that's why we started the petition, because it's falling apart fairly rapidly. And after this winter, with snow removal and what have you, it's only going to get worse. And, you know, if it's going to be put off for a year, two years, it, it concerns me as all, just from a public safety standpoint for the residents on Fairway Drive.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
I guess what I would be here to do is to make a request that we get this done as soon as possible. And if it can't be done in '24, that for sure, we would have a chance to get it done in '25.
I don't know if I can promise for sure, Butch.
Well, as a matter of record, we're asking for that. Any other questions, or me?
All right. Thanks, Butch. Thank you, David. All right. Now we go to the review of the 2024 budget. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Council. I think we'd like to start off where we, on the capital improvement project, it's been updated since the work session, which was enclosed in your packet. So the, the new capital improvement program, total dollar amount has gone down from $1.471 million down to $1.1 million. And $350,000 is coming from the community investment fund. So the cash, or the $350,000 would be general levy, the $752,000 coming from the community investment fund. So that ask has gone down about $300,000. And then we have moved some dollars over from the original cash column over to the public safety bill, as well as the ARPA dollars. Some of that's going to be from the fire and PD, as well as parks and recreation asks are the majority of those dollar amounts. And then you'll also see on the street improvement program, we, we took the dollars from the memo and we just showed where the funding sources would be coming from for those capital improvements. Just looking forward, just to give you a little bit better idea of where the money's coming from for those street projects.
Questions?
Mayor Reese.
Yes, Audrey.
I know we had a conversation before about the four police vehicles, but could we just walk through that again? What would happen if we delayed like two of them? Where are we at with that? Or delayed some of them? I don't, I just picked two.
Chief, do you want to address that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Regarding the police vehicles, right now, I don't know if it helps at all with the discussion, but there's significant delays in ordering vehicles. We were just informed that Ford is probably not going to make any police vehicles in 2024. And any orders in late 2023 or '24 will be manufactured in 2025. So we're having to seek alternate brands and that type of thing to fulfill that. Part of it is, we have held our police vehicles longer, excuse me, longer. We're typically, it used to be about a four-year rotation. Now we're doing a five to seven-year rotation for the main patrol vehicles. They are lasting us longer, but by the time they need replacement, they're pretty well-used up. So it is advantageous for us to try and replace the four next year, if possible. If we can get them.
So are they?
Go ahead, Julie.
Are they already on one year past the rotation or two years past the rotation?
With, if I understand your question correctly, if, if an order is placed in 2024, if the, those four vehicles, it would be?
Oh, I was thinking of the ones that they'd be replacing. Aren't we already extending?
We are.
The rotation?
Yeah, right now, we just, we haven't received, we've just got notice that it's in, but the fourth vehicle that we were hoping to replace this year, we don't have it in hand yet, but it just arrived at the dealer. So it'll probably be mid-2024 before everything gets completed on that one to be put in service. So they are being forced to go probably at least an additional year or two longer that way.
Are we seeing an increase in maintenance?
We, we, at that portion of mileage, we are starting to see that. So that was some adjustments that were made to the Police Department budget too, but some more significant, more than just the normal wear and tear type thing, some major parts that need to be replaced.
Tom?
Are all four of them squad cars?
No, one's a Chevy Colorado.
Well, one would be a CSO vehicle then. One of the, the parking enforcement animal control vehicles is set for next year.
Mike?
Do you have to come up with all the funds for these? Say if you order it and doesn't come till 2025, do you have to pay for all of the funds at the time of the order?
What the dealers have done is at the time of delivery.
Delivery.
Correct, yep. So that's one thing that we, we were able to get a 2023 vehicle to beginning of 2024. So they just required at the time of delivery.
Audrey?
If we do these four, what will you need next year? I think it's important to understand.
Sure. You know, what we've tried to do is, in the past, is standardize, four has been a typical number for replacement. I know we do have one of our support vehicles, that's a large dollar amount, that, I don't have the vehicle CIP in front of me, I apologize, that is going to be, needed to be replaced sometime. We've been moving that back. It gets very low mileage, but it's a 2009, I think, no, 1999, it's a 1999, I'm sorry, that we still have in service. And that one will need some replacement sometime, but I don't recall if that's next year or whatever. And it's been adjusted for those years, fewer squad cars to replace that bigger vehicle or specialized vehicle.
How many squad cars do we have?
We have, boy, roughly, I'm just guessing here, maybe about 26. We have a number of them that run 24 hours a day, that people swap. So they, they run constantly around the clock. And what our fleet manager, one of our sergeants, does is he tries to balance that out. Once they get to a certain amount of mileage, then we'll switch it to, you know, maybe a lesser-used position, or they end up going to their school resource officers, so that very limited mileage gets put on them. And up until recently, the captain and I kind of, we took them at the end of their life and used them up from there, so.
I also know that we've had a couple encounters during the year where the cars have been, I don't know if they were totaled, but they've been, what happens then if we, if we lose a car?
That's a challenge for us, that replacement cars aren't out there like they used to be. In a case where one of our officers was in a pretty major accident or crash a couple of years ago, it was a little bit of a struggle to find a vehicle. They did find one, but we do our best to replace them, or I'm sorry, to repair them. And just to repair them to, to make sure they're safe, make sure they, they look decent, but they don't have to be perfect. We've been trying to be very conscious about some of those repairs too, that if we can replace with non-factory parts, that would still be sufficient doing it that way. And City Garage has been great about, they've become bodywork people by default for us on a few times, so.
Thank you.
All squads, are they all usable?
Yes, all the squads we have, well, we have one that needs some work after it, encountered a deer on the road that's in the back lot right now. And, but otherwise, all the rest are, yep, are, are usable and being used.
So you had venison for Thanksgiving?
Nobody was in the, the mood for venison after that, so. The squad car did fairly well, but all the airbags went off. That's the big expense. So it's just getting all the airbags replaced, so.
Mike?
Do you get trade-in values for your vehicles?
That's one thing, on our last two, two squad cars that we did, that that dealer took trade-ins. Traditionally, some of the, some of the state bid places, or a lot of them, did not take trade-ins, but the one dealer that we got our last two replacement vehicles from did. And when we compared it to the auction sales for our SUVs in the past, it was probably about $1,000 more per vehicle by trading it in. So it was, it was on good cost savings there.
Sure. Okay. Got your question answered?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Hanson. Last time we talked about the budget, I asked if.
Last time we talked about the budget, I asked if, if your ladder truck had heated seats or what kind of added bells and whistles might contribute to that amount. And now that you're here, can you give us like a rundown of like, is there a base model that only costs 500K, but you wanted the heated seats and the CD player and all that fancy stuff?
A-trac.
Yeah, A-trac.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The ladder truck that we have, that our committee has built, is a fairly basic one. They were given the, the orders or however you want to say it. It's not to be a parade truck, it's to be functional. And that's what they came up with. Unfortunately, it's still super expensive being functional. We did compare it to other cities and their trucks, and it's right in the ballpark of what they, what they run, unfortunately.
Can you run through some details of the current ladder truck and where is that in its lifespan?
The current ladder truck is a 1999. So it'll be coming up on the 25-year mark. It's starting to see some wear and tear. We try to use it more, just so those parts don't, you know, seize into place and stuff like that. Currently, it, we had to do some repairs this year on the aerial itself and actually last year as well. They have to go through a yearly certification. And this year, it barely made it, so we had to do some repairs on it. But we just see that the hydraulic stuff is, is starting to slip a little bit. Everything is just kind of showing 25 years on that truck, so.
And how often does it get used?
Right now, it, it runs out as our second truck in pretty much every call. We rotate it, we rotate trucks monthly so we don't have one just get all the miles on it and, and the wear and tear on it. But it, it does get used frequently.
Okay, and then I think my last question. Are there other cities in the, the county and the area that, that, that services?
Yes, pretty much every city in the county. Spicer does have an aerial and so does New London. But we do still assist them if they need something, if there's a lot of service. Other than that, every other county or every other town in the county. And then we do also go outside the county if other cities in surrounding counties need an aerial.
And so since that's a relatively unique, you know, piece of equipment in the region, is there any compensation from other municipalities for that?
It, it, through our mutual aid agreement through the state, it depends on how long it's out. If, I believe if it's more than like eight hours, then we have, we can bill for it. Within the county, we typically don't bill because we help each other out all the time. So.
Thank you.
Now you explained some of the wear and tear. Is there metal, like cracks or anything like that?
I, I don't know if there's any metal cracks. This year, they did, they called it a magnet test on it, just on the aerial part, the ladder part itself. And we did have a few pieces that we had to re-weld just from the twisting and stuff going down the road. But other than that, the body is in, in decent shape right now. It's some of the mechanical parts of it that we're starting to deal with.
Marys?
Yes.
Could you just speak to the insurance ratings and does having a new, does this, will this help our insurance rating? Or is it just a replacement that we're already in the same place?
I, I, it'll be just a, a replacement. It's going to be basically the same height as our current ladders. It's actually, I think, three feet taller. But it's, it's just going to be replacement. There's other areas we have to, we already are getting the max points for that type of truck.
It's more about response time when it gets to be the insurance ratings? Am I correct or?
There, there's a whole bunch of things.
List of things?
Yeah, it's, it's a process that we go through. Anywhere from response times to training hours to vehicles, to number of buildings that we protect and the population and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
I want to know, what's the next truck and how soon do we have to replace that?
The next truck after this one is going to be in 2027, I believe. That would be the 25-year life on that one. And I believe we have a plan moving forward. Instead of coming and asking for a bunch of money at one time, I think we're going to try to put money aside for it.
Is that a pumper or?
That is a pumper, yes. Yes.
Yes, Carl. And similar to the police vehicles, I'm assuming if we order the truck today, it'd be two or three years out before we?
We are looking at about two years out right now, yes. If we sign a contract today, actually, our first payment does not have to be to the manufacturer until after January 1 of '25.
So you're looking at two more years with the current?
Yes.
Truck?
Yes. And then at that point, we're hoping to sell it to get some value out of it.
That gives me a different perspective for rating two years. Now, Tom?
So with the first payment not due till January, you know, 2025, could we do like half of it this year and then put the other half in for 2025? Or that we got, you know, 50% down that you could pay on January 20, 2025? And then when it comes in the following year, we could pay off the rest of it?
That, that's possible. But I think past practices is that we've had to have the money in the, the council okayed prior to signing the contract. I, I, I don't know the fin, that finance side of it, that's more on Tom's realm.
Yes, Vicki.
How much can you sell the current truck for, do you think?
Currently, if we sold it today, about $200,000. I, I can't tell you in two years, who knows?
Thank you.
So.
Do you have any idea of what we paid for it in 1999?
1999. I'm going to guess right around the $500,000 mark, right in that area, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, Justin?
Mr. Odens, could you respond to the question that Councilmember Butterfield was kind of asking about? Could this be something that we spread out over two budgets?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Councilmember. So on this, on this particular worksheet, we were proposing using an equipment certificate. And I just spoke to a representative of a local bank on that this after, this morning, this afternoon. And that more or less would be treated like a bond. It's, we'd be borrowing money from local banks if, if the council were to do this route of financing. And it would be treated like a bond. We could set up our terms of length of payment, set up our amortization schedule. If we, we could decide how many years we want to pay it off, but it'd be very similar to our street improvement bonds where there'd be two interest payments per year and one principal payment per year. The, the positives to that is we are, the, the local banks are contributing to local projects. And then also on the city side, we are able to save some costs on the bond issuance and, and working with the local bank and it'd still be a tax-free, just very similar to a tax-free general obligation bond, but we wouldn't have to go through all the bond issuance costs associated with it, so.
I just have to ask Kyle, you're not looking to get in the conversation. I see that flashing.
No.
No?
No, I don't know what's flashing, no.
No, I didn't mean you were flashing.
Oh. Uh, no, I could add to that too, to, to Tom's point. And that's, that's exactly what we're looking at. And that's the importance of the equipment certificate. If we wanted to spread those payments out and, and kind of lessen the impact to our CIP as we build it back up over a few years. If we wanted to split that over two years, I mean, that would eat up a majority of our CIP for next year. Is it doable? Yes, but there are other projects that the city needs to move forward with as well.
Okay. Frank, did you have something you want to state?
The, the only thing that I have to say is that, you know, our guys worked really hard putting this truck together and making it something that is not a parade truck. So they, they did their due diligence over about eight months to put this thing together. I did receive an email earlier in the month basically saying that first of the year, the price is going to go up about 6%. So we would like to, you know, just keep that in mind as well.
Tom? How much, how much of that $920,000 would, from the state, would we allocate towards this?
That's up to you.
Well, where, where is it allo, all allocated in the budget right now?
Currently?
Currently in your, in your CIP, in your handout, there's roughly $566,000 that would be allocated towards the ladder truck. The remaining balance of $440,000 would be for various other things such as radios for the police department, fire department, forensic computer upgrade, rescue struts and maybe a hazardous containment system. But that was new to ARPA, but various other items as well. But as Administrator Valiant said, that is up, that, the way we spend that money is up to the council.
Justin?
As I'm looking at the CIP, I'm noticing that in that cash line that we're expecting for those projects, that we're going to take $350,000 from the general levy.
Correct.
And there's?
Yep.
Yep. So I'd love to get that number to zero, where there's nothing coming from the general levy and we're not, you know, increasing taxes for the CIP. And I'm wondering if we shift all of the, those four squad cars to the public safety bill and then shift some of that money that we were going to spend over there from the fire truck back to that equipment certificate. That's $245,000 on my way to my 350. Is that possible? Is there?
Well.
There problems with my thinking?
The only thing is, and this is just my thinking, squad cars don't last that long. So you're using one-time money for a short-term solution. So your one-time money, you should be, to me, should be for a long-term solution, which is really, the fire truck is a long-term solution. Playground equipment is a long-term solution. Radios, those kind of things are long-term solutions. The, the, it's not going to help us, it's not going to help us to reduce our general fund, our tax levy. We, we are at the lowest that we really should be for our tax levy because that is just going to create a ripple effect next year and the following year. So you've just got to keep fighting on the tax levy side to try to maintain that. And this is what has happened in the past and that we were using reserves and not trying to get the tax levy up to use for our budget.
So?
And so this year, we've, we've created our tax levy, so it's a balanced budget. And we're using just our tax levy for our general expenses.
So you're saying that the tax levy that you're proposing at this point is sustainable into the future? Whereas if we shift those four squad cars into one-time funds next year, we're going to have to raise the tax levy to pay for the squad cars that we're going to need?
That's correct.
Audrey?
I was going to ask you just to expand on why the tax, why you think the tax levy needs to be where it's at. But we are, I appreciate that we're talking about a balanced budget. We're not using cash, but we're still using a proposed?
Correct.
$752,000 to make this balance from a fund that's not going to be there very long. So we're still doing, in my mind, we're still doing the same thing we were before. It's just coming from a different account.
Correct, but we are working towards where if you keep the fund at that budget level now and then next year, you increase it moderately. And we're continuing, of course, and next year, there's going to be an increase because we just are past our 2024 street improvements. So there will be an increase because of the bonding for that 2024 street improvement. But also there's going, you know, we look at what kind of property values are going to be. We look at the growth that we've got coming and that too, so that then that budget then would, the tax, the rate of the, would stay more consistent. And then also, like you say, we also have in our general tax levy already $350,000. So next year, that can increase, just like you've seen with the community center or the city hall bonding. It increases about $25,000 each year. Well, that, just based on property values, if we keep that, that should also increase because property value increases. So that's, you know, so you're constantly going to be able to have some kind of increase happening because of property values increasing too. And of course, with new construction coming on, that kind of thing, those all help also increase that. So, so it's just, it's a long-term road. I mean, it doesn't happen by, in a blink of an eye. You know, it, it takes a long time. It took you eight years to deplete the reserves. And so now we got to bring that back up. We've got to come, we've got to work on how are we going to get that news back? And this is just, this is just the way that we, you know, are trying to do that. We're looking at, you know, trying to figure out, as Frank Hanson alluded, a way to include in our budget a set amount that goes to vehicles each year. Instead of this, well, let's just have, you know, $1.7 million on a fire truck this year, where if we would be able to work on our budget, and this is what we've been doing, and come up with that dollar that just needs to be in that tax levy for vehicle replacement, it becomes then just a constant budget item instead of this kind of roller coaster effect going on.
If I may, just to follow up with that, that this is only the CIP. And so our other budget, our regular, has taken a pretty good increase this year too for other reasons. And so, you know, I think we need, when we get done with this, we need to talk about what are we facing for the next year with the same? Or how do we, how do we slow that down?
Well, this year, so Tom and Kyle, please join in when you want to. So 2024, one effect is that we've done a market rate study and we would like to get that implemented. That is a big effect onto the 2024 budget. So now that's going to already be then in the 2025, 2026 budget. Those things are already going to be in the tax levy because as long as you keep it where it's at or going to be, then, then that'll just be a constant also. And what were the other, we, we bound, what we did is we had some departments that we weren't, that were always running in a negative because the budget was not enough. So we looked at those budget lines and that's one effect that we did is that to create that balanced budget this year is we upped some of those line items. We found our refrigeration bond payment wasn't accounted for in the bond, in the general levy, which it needed to be. And so that was a big addition. We had, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, there's some other significant budget items, like the, like the law enforcement operations. The county and the city have an agreement for the operations of the law enforcement center. And that was another item added into, it falls under the police department budget, but that's, it's out of the general fund. Our insurance costs have increased a fairly significant amount. And then also just being realistic with our overtime that we do pay staff, whether it be? the larger item for the overtime would be public works, snow events, and then also with our police department. Some of that might be attributed to staffing issues, but we're just being a little bit more realistic with what the city has paid in the past and then budget for those appropriately. Instead of come audit season, we're showing that the departments are consistently over budget. I don't think the departments are asking for the world. They're just being, we're just being a little bit more realistic with our expenses.
Tom.
My question would be for the police and fire department. On those radios, could we push those back one year or is it absolutely need to be replaced this year?
Look at that, you got both of them.
Yeah, yes.
For both.
I know.
I'll let fire speak first.
Perfect. So Mayor, members of the council, on the radio situation, the radios that we currently have are out of date. So basically if they stop working, there's very minimal parts out there. I would prefer not to push them back because it's a life safety issue for both, you know, my firefighters and the police officers, having a functional radio that we can depend on.
And I'd echo a lot of the same things that Chief Hanson said, that it's, still I get flabbergasted when I see it, but this radio that I carry is about $6,500 worth for each radio there. They've been in service for, it was when the Republican National Convention was in the Twin Cities. We bought them used from Minneapolis PD and St. Paul PD back in the day there. They were, you know, had been used for like two weeks. But they're reaching the end of their lifespan. They don't make parts for them anymore. And again, it's one of the most used pieces of equipment our personnel have. So we've been replacing them like one or two radios a year and costs have risen dramatically. So, you know, getting them as many as soon as possible would be helpful.
Now, the reducing that, of course, is out of the public safety funding. So that doesn't do anything with the tax levy.
Well, we could move some of that money over to the fire truck. You know, I understand your point. We've got to spend this money. It doesn't matter. We got all this money. It doesn't matter what pot we're coming from, we're still paying the money out. So we just have to look for what's going to be best for the taxpayers, business owners of Wilmer, on what's going to be beneficial for them because a 40% increase in two years is not justifying the feedback I am getting from all the phone calls from constituents of Wilmer. They are not happy about our spending here in Wilmer. So I think we need to do a lot of trimming off of this and I just don't know where to start. Carl.
I'm still relatively new to the council and this is my first budget go-around. And as resident of Wilmer, I appreciate the fact that my taxes have not gone up very much in the last many years. Thank you for all your hard work in that. But we also got to be careful that we're not just kicking stuff down the road. And, yeah, sometimes it hurts. You know, what are we here? We've got to fix the roads. It costs money to do that. We've heard it tonight, you know, people want their roads repaired and it, it costs money to do that. It costs money to keep our fire, our police going. It costs money to keep our parks upgraded. We can't do that without increases. And I agree, Tom, we need to do our due diligence and be responsible. And we can't just spend money that we don't have. But I think to say that people are upset because we're providing services isn't fair either. If people want things in the city, you know, it's going to cost some money. And so we got to be careful not to just say, well, we can't do that. Let's, let's do it later. We, it's going to hurt a little bit because of what we've done the past many, many years and had little or no increases. Now it's catching up to us. That's, that's my view.
In the long term.
Yes.
It would be financially wrong for us not to do it.
Yes, and I think we need, we do need to be careful. It's good to ask questions and make sure that the money that we're spending is being spent wisely and responsibly. But unfortunately, there is money that we have to spend. And we can't just keep cutting and pushing stuff further down the road because eventually it's going to come back and cost more.
And I have trusted staff in the development of this budget that they don't put things in there just because they want it. It's because they need it.
Agreed.
Audrey.
Just a different question on the CIP. I think I figured it out. The ARPA funds that are listed, the column is $453,000. Two of those were already accounted for. The rest of those rec. department ones are coming out of what's in the ARPA funds as lost revenue?
Yeah, yep, basically. Yeah, you can, you can take it whatever you want. It's just coming out of the ARPA funds.
Well, the sheet that we have now, as it's allocated.
Right.
Has room for that. I figured it out.
Right, because we didn't put them in the ARPA fund sheet.
Yep.
Directly, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's within $1,000 or $2,000.
Yep.
$2,000. It's roughly the same.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's up to you, council, what you want to do next.
Well, I just want to point out to the council that if you would go, if you all have your budget up, it's page nine in the packet. It's the preliminary budget revised. Because we have trimmed everything that we possibly could out of expenses. Our expenses for 2024 are only going up 1.22%. And, you know, we looked at our revenues to see what kind of increases we could have for our revenues and such. So because revenues would increase the tax, would decrease the tax impact. But it's just, we can't, I don't think we can go any lower with our expenses. And yes, that still comes out to be a tax effect of 10.86%. But it comes out to be a tax rate impact of about 2%. So our tax rate currently is 53.033. We're estimating that our tax rate for 2024, because we don't have all the correct property values for taxes. We have estimates. So we're estimating that net tax rate effect is going to be 55.014.
Tom. On property taxes, how many new houses have been built in Wilmer in the last two years?
Nine.
Nine?
One last year and eight this year.
How many have been built in Green Lake Township in the past two years?
I have no idea.
Audrey.
I have a couple more questions. I don't know if we're done. Are we done with the CIP? I don't want to go to something different if we're not done.
Looks like, looks like it.
We're good. One of the things that we didn't talk about that I'm just curious about is what's in the budget next year for branding? Is there dollars in there for the work that's being done? We haven't talked about that. Where is that and how much is it?
Kyle, you want to answer that?
Sure. So the services that for branding are being paid out of the 2023 budget. That will all be done this year. Their goal is to have a brand strategy guide wrapped up and presented to us before the holidays at the end of December. However, we'll see how, how their work goes, but we're anticipating that work to be completed by the end of this year or early next year. For implementation of the brand, we want to be strategic and slowly integrate that and be responsible in how we integrate that into, to our work environment, to the community. So there is approximately $17,500 in the 2024 budget for brand implementation. And that could be a variety of things. And that'll be a discussion that we have with the consultant and what the best way to roll that out is, whether it's anywhere from business cards to letterheads to vehicle logos. We wanted to make sure that we, we do this responsible and we can slowly integrate this over the next few years.
I have one more. And I don't know when we're, we were handed tonight the civic requests that I think are in the budget. It's the first that we've seen this.
No, it was in your preliminary packet in September.
I don't remember seeing it. But I'm just curious, I think there's a couple on here that we've not talked about before. And I'm also curious what we didn't fund this year. Because we always went through that together as a council.
There was nothing as far as civic requests that you did not fund. These were all the civic requests.
All right.
So it's up to you if you want to fund these or not.
The historical society is new, is it?
Yes.
Yep, the bottom three, the historical society, the Candywood County Fair and the Wilmer Lakes Association are new requests to the council for 2024. The top few have been historical requests that have been adopted and paid by the city of Wilmer.
Could you speak to the fair one of $25,000?
That is for their new project that they did with the pavement and the, and the stormwater work that they did for the racetrack and such. And so they've asked if the city would contribute $25,000 over the next three years. We did meet with them earlier this year on that project before they got started. And so.
So we've only made a one-year commitment though, or we're talking?
We didn't make any commitment.
Any commitment at all?
But it is, it's a three-year ask. And so that's, so it'd be $25,000 each year.
Is the, is the historical society, is that a one-time ask for 15?
It looks like it. We did, staff just revised and looked at those again today. And it doesn't reference any future asks on the application that they submitted to us.
Follow up on that. Is the county contributing? Do we know anything for the historical society?
I don't know.
Or the fairgrounds?
Well, we know that they're putting it for the fairgrounds.
No.
Fairgrounds is not theirs. Fairgrounds is privately owned.
Okay, the fair association.
Yes.
I just know there was just an article that they were, they were, yeah. They were just requesting money from the county then.
Yeah.
Because it went over.
I haven't heard anything, what they're doing. Yes, sir.
I can speak a little bit on the Wilmer Area Lakes Association. I'm a board member of this. We've been trying now since 2017 to do some, basically some clearing up of the situation our waters are in right now. We're working on the discharges. And we're also looking at a possibility of using some of the stormwater, rerouting it into wetlands. And which would be a huge step in the right direction if we can do that. We've been talking with that for quite some time. But Wilmer Lakes Association, we also been doing a lot of fish removal. And we have a trap up in Scottus right now. In fact, it was, it was removed for a while, but it did a great job last year controlling the carp population, which contributes to your stained waters, the condition of your waters. So we've been doing that and working with also with the trappers. Sometimes we have to pay them to come in and trap 95,000 pounds of rough fish. And that's what that money's going for.
The redirecting stormwater into a detention pond is what it would be.
Pardon?
It would be a detention pond.
Right.
And if you got cattails in there, it removes the phosphorus.
Absolutely. And this does. And we have talked to the farmer and he is in favor of it. When we get the plan all set up, we'll run by him. But he's in favor of this, of this retention pond. And we would have a situation where we get to a certain level and then we release after it has set through all of the siphoning. And it's a, you can't imagine the water that comes down 19th and Fairway, um, hey, Fairway Drive, Country Club Drive. If my stormwater in front of my house plugs, that entire intersection is flooded within an inch of range, that fast. And that water is immense. That could all be going back into that retention pond, sifting, getting some of that phosphorus you're talking about. And if you saw the report on the chemical treatments of our fish right now, we're in, we're in right now in a situation where we need to do something and do it soon because Wilmer Lakes and Foot Lake was named out of 130 that has chemical poisoning. And that's where it's coming. I don't know if you have any idea how many, how many inlets we have in our lakes, but we have a lot, a lot.
I'm going to ask Jared a question. I think I understand it right. A retention pond, the water, there's no outlet into anything. It just sits there. But a detention pond is a short-time holding and will drain out after it's.
Yeah, that's, that's generally correct, Mayor. But right now, it's very rare that any ponds are designed without an outlet due to flooding concerns. Yep. But historically, that was the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we got into a long discussion. We, education. Audrey.
Just a question and follow-up to what Councilmember O'Brien was talking about. With our lakes being listed on impaired waters, does that open the door for us to be looking for other funding opportunities to make additional cleaning and?
With the, I don't know if you saw the latest information on the chemical poisoning of our fish when we were listed. We are getting ready to send in for grants. Yes, we are getting ready to do that. We just put together a grant today for a new trap, for a new trap on Scottus. I won't go into that why, but we need new trap.
So who would, who's doing those grants? It's not the city of Wilmer, right?
It's, no, it's Wilmer Lakes Association doing it with the.
Soil and water.
Yeah, with the DNR.
Soil and water.
Yep, not so well.
Oh, DNR.
No.
DNR, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Glad to hear that.
Yep. In fact, I just sent you a copy of the, of the grant.
I'm looking through the council.
So is there any questions that we can continue to answer for you about the budget? This is what will be presented next Monday night at the Truth in Taxation. Right now it shows an increase of tax levy of 10.86%. And, anything else?
I think somebody asked at one of our other meetings, what would we need to do to get it down to 10? And I think you answered that question already, but I'm asking again.
Get it down to 10?
Yep.
So just getting off 0.186%?
I think it's about $80,000, somewhere around there. Round number, 80,000.
I'm trying to think how I would ask you the question. I don't mean to be critical. What will 0.86 do? I mean, that's, why?
Well, it's just, somebody asked that question at one of the other meetings, could we get it down to 10? I asked that question. I don't know. And 80,000 in this, maybe we can do, does it make a difference?
No. No.
I guess that's for the council to decide.
Okay.
You know, we did drop it about five, over five percent because we were at about fifteen-plus percent increase on the preliminary. And like I said, we worked very hard to get it to this point, increasing some revenues that we thought maybe could handle it and, um, and decreasing expenses. Like I said, our expenses are only an increase of one point two-two percent, which in looking back at the things that we have added to those expenses that were not being accounted for previously, that's a lot.
Do you have the, that figure that you've shown us a couple times? I don't think I've seen it in the packet tonight about what the cost for someone that has a, a home, you know, that's valued at.
Oh.
Whatever magical numbers you pick.
Yeah, we do. It is just, it's, it's hard to, that's only one variable in the whole picture, you know, as real estate values have also increased. It's, the tax impact is under five percent. Um, but yeah, it's tough with the market values adjusting and not all, the county assessor's office doesn't always treat every neighborhood the same based off sales. They're, they have to stick within a certain ratio of the sales that happen in the area. So it's tough to say explicitly because every, every house is a different.
But the tax impact is, I think, did you say two percent something?
Um, under five. The tax rate increase is under two, the old mill rate, if you will. That is proposed to be under two percent increase. Yep. But the actual tax impact would be under five to the taxpayer.
Right. And just, I mean, looking at the numbers that are before us, right? It's that, as you say, it's expense has gone up one, one point two percent. It's streets. It's fourteen percent increase for streets.
Yep.
The nineteen percent increase, you know, in that public safety realm, like, yet to have a constituent tell me that they want less public safety and that they want less streets.
What's the county's increase as it relates to what we're proposing?
I do know the levy increase, but I am unsure of their tax rate increase or how it affects, um.
Yeah. Is it five?
I, that number rings a bell, but I, I.
Okay.
I'm uncertain.
Two, two point nine, I believe was the, oh, I'm sorry, that's twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, I think it was close to five.
Yeah.
Not over five.
And just to point out, I did supply the, the other ARPA dollars. There was originally published in your packet, the one that was handed out tonight. We just haven't updated remaining balance. Just to remind the council, that does not need to be allocated quite yet. We'll have to do that in 2024 and spent by 26. That's just an update from the last work session.
How much of that could we use towards the fire truck? Or want any of that qualify?
Well, do you know?
What was that?
ARPA for the.
ARPA, would that work for the fire truck?
I'd have to review those again. I don't recall off the top of my head if, if vehicles was one of the expenses allowed.
Okay, because I know, uh, Councilmember Nelson's asked a number of times for us to see all what we could be spending that money on. I haven't heard back from it. I don't know if Audrey's heard back.
Yeah, I think we did have a discussion about it. There's some changes on those sheets that were passed out and.
Yep.
We're still working on it, right?
Yeah, because, yes, because we had the discussion about this at one of the work sessions two weeks ago.
Yep.
And that, and so we changed these that you see now that were crossed off. So, um, looking at the internet here, it looks that the preliminary levy for Candy Island County was five percent increase preliminary.
Where's that coming from?
It's coming from the phone.
Oh.
Oh. Kyle's fault. Yes, Tom?
I got one more question. How much do we pay the county to have the meetings out at the county building compared to having city council here?
We don't pay anything for the use of it unless we go over, for overtime.
Okay, and what's overtime at?
Well, if it's an hour, it's what, fifty-six dollars? Yeah, it, yeah.
Nine o'clock.
Anything after nine o'clock.
Yep. And I believe it's fifty-six dollars. It wa, it was a lot.
There's a long history to that. And the original agreement was the equipment that was in here, right, Rudy? We moved it out when they built the HHS building and put that equipment in there for our use of the building.
Some of it was.
Some of it went?
The city shipped in some money for that building in that room.
I don't think it was much. Yeah, Tom?
And then how much money are we paying for, to use that new electronic voting system at city council?
It's not just the voting system that that's for, so it's, go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, the voting, the agenda software costs the city approximately fourteen thousand dollars a year. Um, it's much more than just a voting software. Um, this is a, uh, we have found to be a crucial tool for staff to put together agendas. Um, and I would say on average, we're saving anywhere between fifteen to eighteen hours a month in staff time in preparing agendas. So this is, this has saved considerable, considerable amount of staff time.
So are we saving, are we saving our fourteen thousand dollars in on, on staff?
I would say so, yes.
Yes.
Without running, having to run the numbers, I mean, if we're saving, we'll say fifteen hours a month, um, on staff time between all the way from the administrator reviewing and compiling down to staff compiling agenda items, um, staying behind to print and collate and to bookmark, I mean, this is, this is a cost saver for the city.
Yeah.
And time alone.
Well, is there anything they can do to fix it from not breaking down where half time, it doesn't show up on our computers for the voting and stuff? You know, it doesn't look very professional, you know, in my opinion, that it's not popping up on mine, you know? And we gotta prolong it and say, Councilmember Butterfield, voice vote or not?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Councilmember. Um, it is frustrating from staff perspective as well. We have reached out to them on a few different occasions. We come back with some network issues sometimes, it's computer issues sometimes. Other times, there are unexplainable excuses on, on why the software isn't connecting or communicating with each other. Uh, the voting is optional. If the council would like to turn that feature off, you could always go back to voice votes. It does not cost any more or any less to use that feature.
But it still saves staff time?
Yes.
If, if you did that?
Um, the agenda software portion, what you don't see, everything behind the scenes, that's where we are spending majority of our time. Uh, what you see at the council meetings is not what we typically use. Uh, that is the public-facing, the council-facing portion of the software. Uh, there is a much more intuitive and, um, robust software that we use to compile the agendas, workflows, um, and department reviews and the like.
Yeah, it has allowed us, I would say, to beforehand, people would just send their stuff electronically or drop it off to the administrative assistant and administration. And she would put it all together. She would have corrected things. She would have, there was times where she would have had to go back to a director and say, well, I don't have this piece. Where's this? Where's the resolution? Judy might not have seen that there wasn't a resolution until the night of the packet before. We're now in the workflow. Judy gets to make sure that whatever is necessary for the packet itself and legal and necessary on the city clerk's side, it's there. And we get to send that back electronically to a director and say, no, you're missing this piece. You gotta get this piece in. And then at least, there's always something there that we know that they've got to get that work done. And it's not on one person now to try to track that down. And somebody doesn't have to save it and create a PDF file on it and, because you can bring in a Word document into this software system and it just becomes a PDF file for everybody else to see.
Tom?
Can we put out like a survey to all city staff, see if they like this program or if they don't like it? So we can get feedback from, from city staff?
I have.
Some might not like it, some might like it, and then we can wait out from there.
I haven't heard from anybody that didn't like it.
I would, if I may, I would just say, there's nobody that's come to us and said they do not like the software. And this is really, and in our, my opinion, it's an operational piece for, for our, to do our jobs. Um, this is what we have found and what we have used, and we have found it to be successful on our side. Uh, if you would like to, if the council would like to change how they use the software on the, on the meeting side, we can try and accommodate that. But from a staff and operational standpoint, this is a, um, in my opinion, a successful use of, successful software.
I would, I would still like to hear from the rest of the staff, though. Some staff may not like it, you know? Let's get a, a full picture of this, you know? I'd be requesting that we just, whoever puts together the agenda using the program, let's get their opinions on it. I'd appreciate it.
I think our administrative staff are the ones that knows whether, whether it works and what it saves. And I, I would stand by them.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mary Reese. I mean, I'd push back to Mr. Butterfield that, you know, um, that's getting into the weeds of our job.
Yeah.
This is, this is our job that we have to do. And like Mr. Box said, we have not heard from anybody that's using this. And I think that most of the people that use it are right here in this room. And the only one that's not here that uses it is Abby, my administrative assistant. Deb uses it, and I think that she's, I've not heard that there's any issue with trying to use the software, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you clarify? I think you was just talking about the voting part of it.
No.
Weren't you?
Well, yeah, majority-wise is the voting part, but, you know, if we're gonna feel it out, I know a lot of councils been complaining about it, you know, it's just not me. But, you know, if we're gonna do it, you know, we should just see if everybody likes it, you know, and if it all works, you know? For fourteen thousand dollars, you know, if only part of it's working, you know, we don't, and we can turn that part off, we're not saving any money, you know? I would like to know the, the full aspect, you know, what everybody thinks. Just not what I think, not what council thinks, not how frustrated the council gets on the voting when it doesn't work.
We don't have to do the voting if the council wants to take that off. That's not, I mean, other than that, I mean, you, you get your packet the way you need it, right?
Forty, fifty people voting, but when you got eight, it doesn't make sense to me because there's more issues. I'm not. And one thing I don't like is it comes up ready to vote and the mayor hasn't said vote yet. And when that's on the screen, you can't go back in there and look at whatever you want to look at. So, and then how many times does it go wrong and you have to do a voice vote? Doesn't look real professional on our part. I agree with Councilmember Butterfield.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vicky?
Thank you. Um, I feel like it's new to us and we still have to practice with it. I think it'll take a little bit of time. And I think, um, it should ultimately be up to our clerk because she's the one who's tabulating the, the votes and everything. And whatever's easier for her should be what, what we do, in my opinion.
And the, my saying vote, I don't know what I, usually when we're voting without the program, I say, is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, then I would say, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? I don't know when to say that. It's, it, I don't know, it's.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, we would be more than happy to set up a, a special work session with council to go over this. I mean, if there are questions or concerns on the agenda software, um, staff would be more than happy to meet with any one of you individually or in a work session setting to go through and, um, answer any questions.
What I hear the most is just the clumsiness of voting. That's all I hear.
I don't know that we need a special work session. It just, you're just sitting here, you haven't touched anything, you didn't do anything, and all of a sudden, you just don't come up on the vote. And you're like, and you're feeling like, I didn't do anything. It just didn't show up. And then you're asked to give the voice vote.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we're, we're gonna be going to voice vote, um, for about four months. So we'll see how we feel maybe in April.
You know, it, um, a lot of that can also be the, the problem with the internet service at the county and that too, that creates an issue because none of you are hardwired. It's all Wi-Fi, and so that can be an issue with, you know, that system too. Um, we do know that, that we've had issues out at the county for internet services also. But those, they're, Jonah will speak to more of that.
I think it'd be a good chance to sit down with all of you out there and do test votes and see what's going on. Um, every, everyone's computer is different. We don't know what the environment's like for you guys when the vote comes up. That's why it'd be nice for me to have a practice session where we can put the vote up. I can see your guys' screens and see what's going on, to try and figure out what the root cause of the issue is. Um, because there's, there's a lot of variables.
And I think when you see that screen come up to vote, that's because our clerk has gotten prepared to do that. That's when that screen comes up, is when our clerk has brought that screen in. Otherwise, you wouldn't see any of that until the clerk pushes that through to you.
Right. So that's kind of where we could maybe take some time and figure out the procedure to make sure this works the way we want it to. Because I agree, it's not fun when you have to do a voice vote, but we have it. I'd like for us to figure it out.
But as far as, like what Councilmember Fagley brought up, as far as a time-saving, I also just see it that it seems like Judy gets frustrated or has stress when she's trying to put a new thing in, and then we're all waiting for it to drop and then be able to vote. It just seems to me like it would be more seamless to just say the names and go through the eight.
Right. And maybe for that instance, where it's on the, on the spur of the moment thing, you just do a voice vote so that it's a little, a little more efficient on her side, too.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Thank you, Jonah.
Yeah.
So we can't shave off fourteen thousand for any system. Okay, bottom line.
Well, if it saves us fifteen hours a month at eighty dollars, that's fifteen thousand dollars, two hundred, fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars a year.
Oh, no question that on the backend and the input, it's, it's beneficial for staff and for the packet. But the voice vote?
Yeah.
Not a factor. That's true.
Move on from that. And what do we want to do with the?
Are there any other questions on the budget? Anything else that? Anything else that we can clarify?
I guess not.
Where do I go?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjourned, get up and leave.